All right, it's six oh two. I'll call the meeting to order. Clerk may have a roll call and an establishment of a forum. Isaiah Crowe.
Here.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
I say yes as well. I approve of posting. Please join you the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we approve the agenda, I'll ask for a motion to move the presentation by the high school and middle school student advisory to four point two and the Black Earth Creek Watershed Association will follow at four point three.
So.
Great. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I say yes as well. So, do I have another motion then to approve the agenda?
So. Second.
Here you're done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes. Any further input tonight? Assuming that. Okay. Move on. Minutes in April. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of October twenty seven, twenty twenty five?
So. Second.
Questions? Mary Dunn? Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the April pool and disbursements, November twenty twenty five attached?
So. Second.
Any questions on any of those?
No.
Mary Dunn? Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So, we'll roll into four point one, the present report tonight. We have a special award to give out. So, we're going to ask our distinguished guests to come forward. I love when they're shocked and surprised. I know. Now I really know. You feel free to read your emails. All right, well, so the school board initiated the Vanguard Spotlight Award in recognizing that we could utilize this public forum as a way to shed some light on some positive and good things that are going on in our student culture and specifically shed light on our wonderful educators that we have in the building. So, these wonderful two students next to you nominated you for this award. And I refer tonight to tell you why they nominated you.
Oh, cool.
Yes, so basically, we were all told in the middle schoolers, like, oh, my gosh, high school is the scariest thing. All the features are gonna be so scary. And then I remember walking into your biology class and the first thing goes, hi, frawshies! And immediately I knew, like, everything was gonna be okay and it was all gonna be super fun.
They chose you because of all the work you put in over the years. And you make class fun. Like, all my other teachers just kind of put a lot of work and you're just making fun with, like, all the things you say and bringing your real-life stories into the class and making it fun, but also, like, the teaching.
Yeah, and, like, we're really grateful for that because I know I can come talk to you about anything and any questions I have. And also, like, I just know, like, your impact has been super huge on me. Like, I go home all the time and I'll just tell my mom those random things I've learned from you. And I'm just, like, super grateful to have a teacher like you. And, yeah.
Thank you, guys. That is awesome. Thank you so much. You guys are the reason that all how many of you have taught here? Thank you. That is really sweet. I appreciate it.
I was gonna say, this one's extra special for me, too, because obviously.
We go away back.
All the years ago. And the fact that the sentiment still holds true all these years later is a testament to your character and your excellence in education and making an impact on students, which is really awesome. So formally, Wisconsin Heights School Board presents this certificate to Mr. Marks with immense gratitude and appreciation. We recognize your passion and excellence in inspiring and supporting members of our school community. Congratulations! I'm gonna be your teacher.
Come on in, kids.
Yay! One more! Thank you, girls. Good job. Nice job. You do not need to stay.
Thank you.
If you actually have ESPN, that's lucky for you.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks again.
All right. And now, moving up our friends from the Black Earth Creek Watershed Association. If you would like to come forward.
Where do we stand?
Presentation. You can come right on front if you would.
Thank you for having us here tonight. So, my name is Michelle Harris, and I'm a member of the Black Earth Creek Watershed Association. I'm one of their board members. I'm also Wisconsin Heights resident, and my kids Olivia and Jack attended Wisconsin Heights and had a great experience. And I'm here to remind you, first of all, I just wrote a few notes. And I want to remind you that the school district has been a terrific partner in being a watershed steward for many years. And I just kind of started listing things that I know. I'm sorry, Mr. Marks, luck, because I was going to say that his curriculum and the field ecology one nine in the high school boards is a great example of how the staff here has supported students learning about the natural environment with a focus on creek ecology and, like, examples macro and vertebrates. That's just a terrific example of stewardship. Another example of the greater school district is we hosted, just this April, on Earth Day, a forum on the health of the Black Earth Creek Watershed. And you are so kind to donate your spaces to those sorts of community programs. On a more personal note, I retired from teaching at UW Madison three years ago. But before that, I was involved with an honors biology program called BioCore. And some of my students were BioCore outreach ambassadors. And Dale Green, back in two thousand and seven, said, sure, we can do a summer science camp. And so, that's where that started. So, I've been involved in that sense, you know, with the little ones here in the district, including Dylan, helping kids to do authentic science and do real-science communication, group work, and so on. The other examples of the way the school district has participated in STEM stewardship include the after-school science club through the elementary school, through classroom visits, again, allowing the UW Madison students to come in and interact with your little ones. Just a great partnership. I think that the Wolf Run Trail, which is just literally outside the door, is an excellent example of how the Wisconsin Heights School District has partnered with community organizations, again, to promote our stewardship for the natural environment and beautiful, beautiful, excuse me, watershed. So, anyway, here's a new thing. So, as a BECA board member, I joined the board when I retired three years ago. And my focus is on education. And just in talking with folks in the community, I soon learned that when I said the word watershed, often people would have a puzzled look on their face. And so, I would say, you know, do you know what a watershed is? And it's okay to say you don't. And often, it's like, I really don't. So, it started with that. So, my goal is to help BECA to promote programming that helps people to better understand watersheds. And through an increased understanding, become better students of it. So, in that spirit, we are proposing two new educational tools. One is a three-dimensional tabletop, maybe three-by-four footage size, 3D model of the Black Earth Creek Watershed. And so, it would include not just the Black Earth Creek, which is clearly the focal point of the watershed, but all of our surrounding communities. It would include all of the tributaries, the smaller creeks that feed into the Black Earth Creek, all of the highways, all of the different areas, the wooded areas, the towns, for instance, the agricultural communities and so on. So, actually seeing that and hopefully touching that model will help people of all ages get better understanding. And so, to accompany that, though, my partner here, Dr. Janet Silvernagle, is going to tell you about what she is thinking of to complement the 3D model.
Great. Thanks. I'm also a resident of Heights School District and of the watershed. And I'm a small-business owner here and also formerly a professor at UW Madison. And so, the second part we're envisioning is take everything that Michelle said and put it into a digital watershed format. So, this would be a collection of interactive web maps and apps that kind of row together and complement the tabletop model. And we envision those as they, they're, like I said, a collection. So, there will be multiple pieces on this online portal that would span the spectrum of learning from very basic understanding to really, really immersive exploration and decision-making. So, for example, at the more basic level on understanding, we start with illustrated maps and narrative and what we call a story map. So, it tells the story of the watershed. It allows students to just get in and understand what's here, just like physically touching the model. Here, they have rich photos, stories, video, drone footage, et cetera. Then it would go to more of an exploration or basic interaction with maps, web maps. So, there they can navigate, identify, turn on and off layers of different kinds of things, like roads or the tributaries or different kinds of land cover, and identify different features. And then going a little bit deeper in the interaction to examine what happens when. And this would be like having some dashboards or some charts or gauges that reflect monitoring for it, perhaps the stream monitoring gauges, so they could see, you know, what happened in two thousand and eighteen, of course. And look back and change the dial to see how things have changed over time or, yeah, where they've been recently and how they're doing. And then lastly, most immersively, it would be a tool that allows for sketching, what-if scenarios on the fly and then being able to see the potential impacts. And that's the design, decision-making aspect. Those are all potential features that we could have within this. And we are just exploring how best to make this happen and put all of those together in a way that's both a really great educational tool and an outreach tool for the broader community.
So, Dylan and I sat down last year, and we just started writing stories, ideas. And he's been a great source of inspiration. So, he's the reason that we're here tonight because we envision these educational tools to be used by people of all ages, we ones to those of us with gray hair. And so, they can be used in a variety of settings, everywhere from classrooms here to the libraries to village meetings for important policy decisions and everything. And we welcome the contribution that all of your talented teachers could bring in many different disciplines, not just social studies, history. I'm sure there are many more. And having the staff here help develop curriculum that could then be cataloged and be borrowed by anyone.
Do you want to talk further about what the endorsement could mean for the group on behalf of the district?
Yes, thank you. So, we are currently fundraising. We hope to fundraise to purchase both of these tools. And the total price tag, we think, is going to be between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars. We are submitting two grants this week to the Wisconsin DNR Surface Water Education Program. One would be five thousand dollars to help pay for the 3D model. The other would be another five thousand dollars to pay for Janet's work to develop the digital tool. These tools would be freely available. So, your work would be housed on a freely accessible website. And.
Publicly accessible.
Publicly accessible.
Yes.
Yes, yes. So, what we're looking for is a variety of stakeholders to write letters of support that we can submit on one of these grant applications. And then any ideas that you have regarding the Heights District would like to participate with the use of these tools in walking up.
Do you want to add anything?
If I may. I also want, you know, she said, we're here because of me. That's not true. BECA itself, as an organization, has committed five thousand dollars as well. So, with these grants, hopefully with a full award for both of them and BECA, the fundraising is already halfway there. And having that broad range of stakeholders really shows the Wisconsin DNR that there's community buy-in. Village of Black Earth signed a letter just last week on the sense of planning development and understanding that from a policy stance being very helpful. And the reason I think we wanted to bring this up to Heights is because of the educational tools. With the local libraries hosting the table, it will be basically checked out and checked in like a book, but it's going to be this table that would be available to the teachers here, to the students here to talk through everything. And the watershed is really big. So, it goes all the way out to Indian Lake and then Highway twelve, all the way up to basically Costco in Middleton, and then down seventy-eight, almost to Mount Porum, and then kind of gets smaller as the hills close out to the Wisconsin River. So, there's, almost all of our students will have some sort of connection to the watershed and will be able, on this map, to point to their house, probably. And we'll be able to have Mr. Marks or whatever teachers there talk about how your impact can be on the entire community, even on your small part of this watershed. I think that will be really impactful just for the students. And then that website will also be so useful for the students to see twenty years from now, thirty years from now, how is the housing development here or agriculture changing into prairie restoration here going to impact the community they grew up in and give that context. So, I think it would be phenomenal to have these tools for here at Wisconsin Heights, also Middleton Cross Plains having some access to build that sense of stewardship and ownership and community in our students. So, thank you to BECA for all of that work for the last decades. And I'm excited for these tools.
Well, I certainly think in appreciation and advocacy for lifelong learning, certainly extending to our students but beyond and in the community that this is a pretty cool initiative. And again, commending both community residents, too, for, and the entire BECA, I'm sure, team. But it takes time and commitment and passion and stewardship from our community members to do such awesome things. So, I'll make the, I won't make the motion. I'll ask for a motion to approve the endorsement of the Black Earth Creek Watershed Association.
So moved. Sorry.
I don't know. That was, Angie, you call. And in assuming that this will be maybe in draft form, a letter of sorts saying that the district endorses it or on some formal.
So, we'll have you sign it, I think.
Right?
And then it'll go to the DNR grant as part of the materials. And obviously, we'll let you know if they'll award. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question so much. I've had an interest in maybe trying to establish a geology club that might involve the students. And I used to go to the lectures here. They'd have a step room for some, like, American history stuff on Wisconsin Heights, but like, bring a community lecture series that we could have on some things that would be open to our district. But it's all been up in my head. But that could include that diagram of hydrology and ecology and all that stuff that could roll into that. But so, I'd be interested to talk to you guys. And my other, maybe, dear question is, where does the relief map get made at? I like love walking through Science Hall and the stairwells and looking at the relief maps, but I don't know. Is that made in Wisconsin or?
So, you're talking about the 3D models?
Yeah.
So, Dylan has been doing some research on where these things are built. We're looking at a couple of different options. So, you have to have the big 3D printers to do this. And we did inquire at the university about that, but they're busy. But Dylan found a company that is based in.
Utah.
Utah that gave us support. So, they have built watersheds in all parts of the country to their experience with this. But there might be some more possibilities. And we would welcome any partnerships.
I think you just sign yourself up.
I've been looking for people that might be interested in maybe getting it more boots-on-the-ground than just inspirational.
I think that's the sort of thing that these tools can inspire is these gatherings of people just to focus on those tools that are already there. That's great. Thank you.
Have you reached out to the Wolf Run Trail?
Not yet.
Oh, she's Fred Wolf Fisher guy. Got it in with them. His daughter-in-law.
I'm very sure.
Just a little bit. He would probably be pretty interested in what you have to talk about.
Daughter-in-law.
Yeah.
All right. Let's take a vote. All right. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt? Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So, thank you, guys. And I'm done. All right. Moving on to our students. I'm sorry, I feel like I didn't notice I switched those. Robert's rule, please don't come after me. But extra time for prep, right, guys? So, and that was an interesting presentation, wasn't it? That you learned about our watershed. So, right now, we'll open it up to our student advisory club for presentation. Yeah, let's just walk. Yeah, let's just walk because they're gonna come up.
I'm like, I think they were supposed to go first.
I know, I'm sorry.
I'm just coming up here just to kind of say I really appreciate the opportunity to get to do something like this. It really, I, it will be Ms. Ballig and also Mr. Schmidt who will kind of take it over from here. We got this thing started once we found out we were doing some, some work upfront, which was really cool. Because we needed some ideas and the students honestly probably have the best ideas between our students and our staff, just working together. That is how this whole thing came about, just student advisory in and of itself. I know one of our students will talk about just our first like step into it, which was sixth grade orientation. But just seeing how that will start to evolve as well, making that, that transition between elementary to middle school is a big step. So this doesn't just encompass the building and the physical aspects of it. This also encompasses our students as a whole. And so you'll see a couple little tidbit pieces throughout this. Super excited that this group of people, young people will be here. And will help us get this going and so excited. I did not have them introduced to and they take it from there. I'm just, I'm in the background now.
So my name's Travis Strickleson. I'm a senior here at the Wisconsin Knights.
I'm Sammy Ballig. I work at this school and I also am alumni 2018. I will say that we, the kids have put a lot of work into this and it's also just since I went to school and Dylan and those that take over to school. The walls are pretty bare. They've been bare for a while. So this is actually quite exciting and it makes me want to go back to school here.
My name is Mello Gurek. I'm a junior here and I've been here my whole life. So it's really fun to make some changes and present some stuff.
My name is Addie Cartman. I'm a senior.
I'm Andy Friderickaki and I am a junior.
I'm Melo Stotts and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Addie Lauren and I'm in seventh grade.
Okay, so the role of student advisory. So basically we serve as a voice for our school. And we just partner with shaping our school and our environment and our culture. We're basically just trying to make this place better. So this was established in the spring of 2025. Our first thing that we did as a little club or group.
2024.
2024. Is that right? No, it's pretty much. The first thing we did as a little group was in the summer, we had a little meeting. And then from there, the all of us, we split up in groups and they separated us up with the sixth graders. And we just walked around the school, gave them a tour from middle school. I know if I was in middle school and I had that, or when I was in middle school, if I was gonna have kind of those roles of people to show me around, that would have meant a lot to me. So I'm really happy we can do that for them. So what we do in student advisory is the main thing we're doing right now is we're designing spaces to make those blank walls look more colorful. And we're just sharing our feedback of how we feel about different things in the school. And then we're collaborating on school improvements, like the design spaces. And then we're gonna choose the wall designs, which we've kind of already done a little bit. We're gonna make the blank walls look brighter and inviting. And then we share perspective on things. We all have opinions and we're all open to share our opinions in this group. And just kind of make this, make our school more inviting. And then we research and explore. We like to go and see what other schools are doing. I think, actually maybe it was 2024. Now, last year, a group of us went with Miss Rhodey and we went and toured different schools and their artwork and stuff in the walls. And I gave us inspiration for our school. Then we collaborate with each other. I mean, we're literally working from sixth graders all the way up to seniors in high school. So this isn't just the high schoolers get to pick what they want to do in the school. This is our school for everyone. And then we meet regularly. It's like right now it's been more because of school work. We just got like this all prepped. And then just like getting the furniture and stuff that kind of took a couple meetings. And then we serve as a voice for our school from the students. Cause I'm sure at the school board meetings, you guys hear from all the adults, but it's also important to hear from us. So we do that.
Okay, and then so this is a little thing that we're working on for that wall right outside the step room here. Like literally on the other side of that wall. The two TVs that work as a little hall of fame, as you would call it, that one on the right would be, would it be a touchscreen? Yes. So that is something that I currently am working on as well. As a part of my job, we met with, what was the company's name?
Rocket.
Rocket. We met this rocket. And they kind of toured us around their webs, their website. It's basically kind of an archive. Like right now I sent them in all of our trophies that we currently do not have set up in our school and they put them all in there for us. Which is really cool. And we're also adding on such things like we're planning on adding our school announcements. Our like ABC days for middle, that, that, that. ABC days, ABC days for our middle schoolers and stuff like that. So it's kind of a fun little addition that we wanted to add along with that kind of public color. Kind of like how they did it in that screen. Yeah, I think I covered most of that. So this is the new area, what you can call it, the lounge. It's that area that you saw right on your left when you were walking in. Where the old concession stand used to be. This table here is gonna be like a little half circle and have multi-layered levels. These can seat up to 10. These smaller ones are for groups of four. And we also have the option to use desks for one person each. But they're a little bit bulkier and hard to maneuver. So that's still, that's an option that we're considering. This area will be really good for students for larger groups and people who want a comber environment during lunch and study hall. It'd also be great for our students to have a little more freedom and independence. It'd also be a good place for sports to meet before going out to the field and waiting for buses. And then this is the area right outside the cafeteria doors next to the south gym. And it seats 16 people here. These are all, or some of these are stools, but they'd all be high back chairs. This would be another really good place for students to just have a little more peace from the cafeteria and the gym and other places that we're currently allowed to be. So one of, another idea that we kind of had was for our walls to kind of be more inviting. So some of our walls out there, we're have that inspiration to kind of have more school colors, like students and just like be more inviting when you come in. And it will also obviously be green and it will.
And this will be by, this will be going down by our athletic hall.
Yeah, this is, these are some of the possible designs just for around the school on our walls. So as has been mentioned, our walls are very bare right now and that's kind of, it gets a bit blank. It feels very. Yeah, very repetitive, very boring. And you know, people already think school is boring enough. Why give them blank hallways to make it more boring? So we've got different options here for designs that we could put on the walls, just kind of bring some more school pride into the building. Make it look a bit more interesting.
And we also, some of these designs can be on the doors, like the high school doors, making it more inviting for the kids.
And then here are a couple other ones, signs, stickers, I think. This is just a couple like things for the walls. These are the runners that they could go in front of the doors here or even in the, what's it called, the airbags?
Vestibule.
Oh, never mind. Just something to show a little Vanguard sign.
The president's little. I mean, all that. I'm sure it's a little stained. And then we also had the thought of possibly we may think about putting a carpet in front of the gym. That is just a thought we had.
So and then on, so we had the picture of that wall, that middleton wall over in our lounge area. We wanted a wall that shit had, we didn't get the picture here, but had some like signs or that had our values on it. That are on our, wherever the sign is here. On our Vanguard value sign, the relationships, but I don't remember them. But kind of just little to kind of show those values that we have in our school. And then the tiles.
Oh, I know about these. So the middle schoolers are each gonna draw on a tile of tile. And then I think we're just gonna pick a couple that we really like and then hang them up so that they can decorate their hallway in a way. Does this sound right to furniture?
Almost. This is where the kids will make that choice and then the community will vote on that.
Oh, the community.
Right, that's, you're thinking our ornaments for the tree.
Yeah, and then we'll hang them up in the school, in the middle school, correct?
A lot going on.
We're really hoping for the, the values and the colored pictures to be up and ready to rock, but they're just not ready. Because they, those will look really cool. So yeah, the students have done a nice job and had to look at a variety of different things.
Awesome. Well done. Are there any questions from the board members? I know, I mean, I'll just say to the, the students, there wasn't obviously a motion on the table or anything. So we're not taking board approval on this, but we certainly endorse. And are so happy that there's a student group taking the helm of this. And we've had to work really hard to, thankfully, we have an administration who is also keen on working with you guys and amplifying your voice. But it really means a lot, like you said, that the hallways are filled with things that you would like to see as students. Because we are not students. We are not of your age bracket. So it's really important for you to keep doing the work and to work with your, your fellow students and amplify their voice too. And just thank you again for the work that you're doing. So it'll be exciting to see.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, everybody. I am going to be giving an update on the changes that we have made with display cases and trophies. Since our conversation from this last summer. We talked about it at our admin retreat when the school board joined us. About some of the changes due to the construction as well as due to some of these school board policies that were passed last spring. And how we needed to change how things were displayed. So we're involved the strategic planning aspect of the changes that were made. Who were some of the contributors to some of the changes we made? Future timelines, what spaces we currently have and what we're doing with them. Cost moving forward, future plans, as well as some questions. So with some of the personal displays that we had. The school board made the change in board policy last spring about no longer showcasing those individual achievements. And more focusing on team achievements and team awards. So there was the AED plaque for the donation from Mary. That has been returned back to her and her family. Christian who stood teaching here. I returned his supplies here since he's here in the building. That's a simple, easy one. Reached out to Mike Wilkinson. He's planning on coming and picking up his display. He hasn't had the time to get over here yet and he plans on coming and picking it up. And then the military awards that we have, I haven't quite gotten to those, but I know that I don't currently have the connections back to those families. Where we can return some of those awards back. So I'm gonna need some of the help from community members on getting some of those connections. So that we can return some of those awards back to those families.
Where were those? I don't remember seeing the military awards.
They were over in the athletic hallway by the high school main entrance.
In one of the boxes.
So they're, yeah, in one of those thinner boxes. Yeah, so there's a couple of service awards that were donated from the families, from those members after their service and stuff. We talked about the priority listing at our admin retreat that we're gonna focus on, you know, kind of delineating what was the most important to display and kind of going down there. So we started with our state awards, then sectionals, regionals, conference championships, and then invite awards in those smaller tournaments. Kind of being down towards the end. Currently, we don't have enough space to display everything that we want to display. I tried to play Tetris over the summer and early fall to the best of my ability to showcase as much as we could. And strategically placing things in certain areas so that we could display the most. But I do still think that there is room for improvement where there's more things we would like to display that we just currently don't have room for. Currently, the way I have thing Tetris into the three display cases that we have remaining. I have our fall, winter and spring athletic awards for state, regional, sectional, as well as conference for the most part. I don't have all of them in there just due to the limited space. Did the best that I could with the available space we had, but I wasn't able to showcase any of our academic or club awards currently. I think it's valuable and important that we do display those. We just need to come up with an alternative plan, how we can display those appropriately. We talked about how would it be more valuable to return some of those awards to the areas where they pertain? Like FFA awards back into the FFA classroom and the A classrooms. Music awards back being displayed in the music, you know, classrooms. Or is there an alternative way that we can display them in our hallways? Our community likes to come back and see awards, you know, and if they're kind of hidden away in people's classrooms, it's hard for them to be able to come back and see those. Also currently, there was no room for the smaller invites and tournaments, including those that we won so far this fall. Volleyball had won two different invite awards and cross-country have won one. And we don't currently have a good space where we can display those. It would be a nice to have a, an area where we could display at least the current year awards that we've accumulated. And then, you know, the next year kind of cycle them out and then have that space available for that next school year. At a, at a bare minimum, you know, so. I really took the lead on this. A couple of Saturdays that I was here for some Saturday invites. And came in on some Saturdays when we didn't have meetings going on and stuff. Where I could really just kind of spread all the, the trophies out and kind of come up with my game plan and then change it about, you know, 12 more times after that. As I was trying to place things in there and group sports and seasons together to the best of my ability. I brought in coaches and after I had started to place those awards and trophies in there, brought them over and said, hey, how do you, you know, how does this look? What are your thoughts? Especially our fall coaches that were around, you know. They like it, but there's room for improvement for sure. As much as we are able to display, they're still pretty compact and squeezed in there. I don't know if any of the school board members have been over into that hallway and taken a look since that's been done this fall. They're displayed well, but it could be better. I brought in some of our, our support staff and walked them over there or stopped a couple of teachers in the hallways as they're walking past in the mornings and. Hey, you know, take a look at this. What do you think? What are your thoughts and stuff? They've had questions like, what are we gonna do about the academic and club awards? How come I don't see this one in here? Or I've thought, how come I can't, I don't see this that used to be in the, the trophy case, okay? So people do notice and pick up on those things when they're looking for something specific and they can't find it. As well as some of the support staff in the hallways, I've stopped down and asked them to take a look at how they think things are currently being displayed. Some of the community stakeholders that I've had, as I've been trying to connect with some of our local businesses. They've had questions about what are we doing? Because as they come into the building, they've noticed that that giant display case that was next to the entrance of our north gym is no longer there. People are curious. What happened to it? Why is it gone? Where did all those awards go? What's being done about this? So I've included that in part of our conversations. Awards have a lot of sentimental emotions behind them. People have strong connections to those achievements and they want to see them displayed well. So quick timeline, last spring, you guys made that decision as a school board about the individual trophies. Those larger presentation boxes and things that were being displayed to have those down. This summer we went into construction. Part of the construction of this area out here, we came to realize that we couldn't just move those, that big trophy case. That it was bolted into the wall and into the floor and it was extremely well made. And it wasn't gonna be easy to relocate it anywhere. And in fact, they were hoping that they could do it and, but it was secured so well that they ended up having to take it out in several different, different pieces. Into the summer and into the fall, we worked on re-displaying those awards. We found out as I was starting to do this and play Tetris and figuring out, you know, the shelving arrangements that I wanted in there and stuff. We didn't have enough brackets for all of our shelves. Not sure where all those shelving brackets went. We should have the same number of brackets to support each of the glass shelves that we currently have. But we were about 16 short, I believe. Not sure if they got thrown in a box somewhere, if they were thrown out accidentally somewhere. But we, that caused us to have to pause or more of those shelving brackets before I could continue with playing trophy Tetris. And relocating all of those awards. We've worked on reuniting some of those awards that were gonna be taken down, those individual awards that are no longer going to be displayed. And then going forward into the future here, looking at how can we display more? What kind of alternative plans can we come up for displaying more awards? Possibly getting more awards up here towards the front of the building where people are going to be entering and exiting most often. Especially for athletic events as well as club events. And then hopefully, ideally, we would be able to have this all wrapped up going into next school year. But that's going to depend on a couple of different variants. So I tried to group the awards together by sport and by season. So this one here has all of our fall conference championship awards in it that I could get. As far as all of these ones that have conference champion trophies. I have found that there are several of our conference championships that don't have a trophy associated with it. We just have a picture of the team and, and the picture is titled conference champs, but there is no award that's associated with it. When we switched to eight man and our eight man conference wasn't giving out conference championship awards and so we have a plaque made. There wasn't a great spot in this place to display a plaque just because of how congested it was. And so there's some of those like flatter objects, like picture frames and plaques that we need to come up with an alternative plan for. In the bigger display case, I was planning on doing spring and state. But I ended up figuring out that a couple of these wrestling trophies are too tall to fit in some of those smaller cases. So I had to put them in the bigger one. So we've got winter conference championships up here in the top left. We've got baseball and track down here in the bottom. Our state championship trophies here and then our state sportsmanship boards up on the top right there above the state championships. Across the hallway from there is that third display case. And in here we've got our state trophies from track and field and baseball as well that weren't championships. They're a little bit smaller, so they were able to fit in here nicer. There's three more regional trophies before they switched over to the plaques. That I haven't found a great spot as far as how can we fit this into these three current display cases. So I currently have them sitting on a table in our middle. So I currently have them sitting on a table in our middle school library. And I'm still brainstorming on how I could possibly best fit them into the current display cases. Outside of our north gym here, we've had this wall existing with these. However, there was a bunch of these regional and sectional plaques that were involved in and were hidden in different areas inside of this big display case out here. I've got them in chronological order. I'm just currently waiting on Mr. Sullivan to make a trip to Menards and buy some more lumber so that we can do a couple more rows on here. There's about 30 more plaques that need to be displayed out on this wall here. We'll have them in chronological order. We're just kind of waiting for those materials to come in so that we can display those plaques.
Are you thinking two would be the max you would do there or would you book where you went to a different one or you keep going?
As far as how many rows?
Yeah.
Two for sure. I think we might be able to do three here. It's gonna depend on how it looks, you know, and how quickly, you know, height wise, you know, the lower they get, the more people start to touch them and mess with them, you know? And so if you start, you know, bringing them too low, all of a sudden you start finding, you know, marker marks on them. Yeah, they start to get scratched by people walking past with bags and purses and stuff like that. People with keys, you know, so. For sure, we can do two in this space, a second row. I do think that probably with the amount of plaques that we have, we're not gonna have to go to a third row yet. But we, you know, hopefully the more successful we are, we accumulate more plaques. And at that point in time, you know, we'll make the decision of spacing wise, is it okay to go to three or do we need to find a new home for where these plaques are being displayed? Going forward into the future, another area that I'm looking for displays, this is looking down that athletic hallway. The locker rooms are on the left. This is the door going into the south gym on the right. Up here nice and high close to the ceiling. I've worked with Bill and once again, once he makes that trip to Menards, he's gonna buy some J-channeling or C-channeling. And we're gonna take the conference player, the ear awards and we're gonna display them nice and high up in this hallway. So that as the kids are going, you know, to and from practices and to and from games, as families are coming in and out of the south gym for our different sporting events. They'll see them and we're gonna put those in chronological order as well. Haven't decided whether we want to start on this closer corner here, closer to the concession stand, the elevator and stuff like that. And then go newer, farther down, or if you flip it the other way. And start down here closer to the athletic doors and go chronologically closer and closer to the door to that south gym and closer to the elevator. Something we can play around with, the J-channeling works really nice. You don't even have to worry about screwing them in or anything like that. They just slide in nice and high up there. You saw the presentation from the students in this area. This is right up on this side wall here, where you're gonna have those two big interactive TVs here, okay? An idea that we could have for displaying some more of these state sectional and regional trophies would be to create a lower trophy case that would run underneath them. That would not impact with your area as far as the TVs themselves or that big logo that was there in the middle. You could create a U shape outlining those TV areas with some trophies as a possibility. Or what I'm thinking is on the other side of this wall here, where those bolted boards are. This would be creating more of a traditional rectangular shaped display case where we could possibly display those state sectional, regional trophies as well. You would want it big enough where it doesn't look empty, but also that you've got more room to add to it. So that as we accrue more and more trophies, you've got that room and it's not so tight that, okay, we just put this brand new in and it's already not meeting our needs, so. You have a question or?
Yeah, on the two TV one, they're gonna be recessed, right? They wouldn't be sticking out. That'd be really not a good kids hanging out those things and everything else and even a pole. Would they be recessed in those spots?
The TVs?
Yes.
I don't believe.
Yeah, the TVs are across the wall, so.
But you could reach and pull them.
You cannot reach and pull. No, 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 no. You can't reach and pull those, pull them out. They're all recessed to the wall, so. Right, because one of the challenges of the things being underneath would be the kids could be walking up to do interactive pieces. So that would be a challenge for them.
As far as their reach over the top of that.
Right, I just wanted to make sure the kids couldn't get their hands on the side of the television.
No, no, no. At least I did.
Yeah, I like the idea of having more trophy cases, go back to the slide you were just on, yeah.
This one.
Along there because my thing of where the trophy cases are located now, not many people come in that entrance.
Correct.
And so where they are now.
Your community's not seeing them.
Correct.
Yep.
So from my perspective, if we're looking at where to put things in the future. For me, I think utilizing this wall would be the most appropriate. To go down that hallway with those cases. I don't like the idea of putting those cases anywhere near those TVs because there's gonna be too much going on with those TVs, especially if they're gonna be interacting. I think we're just asking for trouble having glass there with those kids touching those. I think having, you know, something dedicated along that wall right there. And if you have it go all the way down that wall, like you said, kind of setting up, setting it up for the future of having, you know, a good amount of space. You know, to where you hopefully don't run out of room, you know, right away. And then as people come in from the community or other schools come in. You're able to see those trophies, you know, as they go to the bathroom or they're hanging out. Because like I said, where they're at now, you're not seeing those unless you're coming in.
It's in a low traffic area right now. Whereas if you put them in this hallway, this is a very high traffic hallway.
Correct, yeah.
As people go to and from the bathrooms for all those events, concerts and everything.
Even if you're not coming in from, you know, from middle school or, you know, even if it's for youth sports or something like that. You're using this entrance primarily. It's not gonna be anybody else's entrance, yes.
So it's still, you know, in a good visible spot as you come in through those front doors where your eyes are gonna be kind of drawn that way as you come in and for admissions and stuff like that. This other area, you know, as it's faced that direction, it's a little bit more visible to that front entrance. But I get the concerns about the TVs for sure. It's just a matter of visibility, right? I think if you do it in this spot, you have a better option for doing recessed lighting over the top of those trophies. Which will help draw your eyes towards this direction as well. Where if you have it underneath the TVs, you're gonna have more like uplighting options rather than the recessed lighting coming down or to the top.
I would say too on those interactive screens, you could, if it's a basketball game, everything's archived in there and you could have highlights from basketball through the years running on those screens during a basketball game. So that would be the showcase when they walked in, something like that too.
Yeah, that's a nice thing about those interactive boards is that we have the ability to upload all of our trophies to it and so they can go and they, you know. There's gonna be athletic sections in there and they can go and they can find the old, you know, conference championship trophy, at least a picture of it from the different years or the football conference championship or the volleyball conference championship or some of the regional, sectional, and state trophies. Pictures of them are all gonna be uploaded into that digital archive as well for people to peruse.
Along with like musicals and plays and things like that.
Yes.
That's a beautiful thing is you can type in somebody's name and whatever they've been attached to in that historical archive piece will pop up. So no matter what they were, and then if, as we get deeper into this and I know Angie's doing a really good job. She's helping me try to navigate where do we pull all this information from. You'll be able to have all those pictures popping. So Dylan, your picture's gonna pop in some spot in there with your name in there. Same thing, Barb is gonna pop, Isaiah, I mean, you guys, who knows what's gonna come out of there, but it will be able to, really cool. And even all the way back from when this building first was constructed. It's, yeah, some cool stuff.
Your valvatorium, your salutatorium, all that's gonna be available in there. Yeah, the plays, the choirs, all that kind of stuff. Another thing that's gonna be a feature in those display TVs are gonna be records. You know, like we currently have our track and field record for in the high school gym, in the north gym. But we have other records that we aren't currently displaying here. There was one broken this year, grand shot for most schools, you know, in the season. But we don't currently have a spot where we're displaying those. Your most points, you know, for basketball and stuff like that. There's other records that we aren't currently displaying anywhere within our building or in our district.
Yeah, speaking along to that point, I, if Angie's right and this whole wall is best for it. I would say go big and make it something that can have a lot in the future so we don't have to ever get rid of the big trophies. But then in the meantime, let's have our records in that space or also what about, you know, as the students in each academic year are awarded sportsmanship awards or captains or things like that. We can put that and elevate those achievements just like the state, just like the big conference championships and everything.
Absolutely, definitely. The biggest concern with this hallway here is gonna be fire code. Is how far can your trophies come out into that hallway without us violating fire code? And that might be a discussion as we go forward about do we go with something that's custom built versus prefabricated, you know, or using local business owners that can help create this versus using an outside company that doesn't have ties to our community? We found out that our previous display case up here was built by Ted Seaberson. You know, our varsity baseball coach. And that he is a professional carpenter and he has done these projects in the past, not just the one that he's done here. And so he could custom build it a little bit more to our specifications to make sure that we don't break fire code. To make sure that it's going to look the way that we want it to without paying an arm and a leg for it. Where a outside contracted company might charge you more. There's gonna be pros and cons with maybe using local people. I know he talked about, you know, he does all the woodwork, but he uses another company for the glass. Because he doesn't really work with glass and if you're gonna do something custom with glass, custom glass can become very, very expensive. Trophy display cases can be very pricey objects. We just did a big project in Partyville right before I left and we were toying with these different options. With prefab versus custom, outside company versus local vendors. That project cost them over $90,000. And it was for a very similar idea of bringing forward to a new front entrance way your state, regional, and sectional trophies. So we have to be mindful about the costs as well. Because ideas are great and, you know, you can have a vision of what you want this to look like, but we have to be financially responsible about how we go about this as well. We need to make decisions going forward as far as, as a board and as an admin team and as a community. What do we want brought forward out here? What do we want it to look like and where do we want to put it? You know, we're starting the conversation here tonight. Already kind of gauging some feelings from the people that are in this room as far as what we're thinking and what's gonna be best. That's a great start, but we're gonna have to have more conversations for sure. Is it gonna be one display case or is it gonna be several that we maybe need to bring? Where are we gonna put not just athletic trophies, but also the academic and the club trophies as well? Something to be conscious about as well. All right. Any other questions?
Just to, so I can tell folks in the community, the Mike Wilkinson archive will be on the TV as well. Along with something maybe for Marissa Bodie as well. Even though they won't have their individual display anymore, they'll be in the archive.
Yeah.
And searchable.
Yeah, it's very easy for us to input. Yeah.
I think what we said in the meeting is that they showed us there is a way to create a person like section and it will have like this person, there's a picture of them, what they do. And then in that section, it can have little pictures of them like the Mike Wilkinson, it could have a picture of him. Maybe if you can find a picture of him during basketball at the school, but we can also find pictures of him. What was it, Madison?
Yep.
Yes, okay. I don't do sports. And then it would have like a description of him for people to see along with that display that we have in front of Norris's gym and then the same can go for Marissa Bodie as well.
And you can connect like YouTube links to them too, which is really cool. Yeah, so they have to be short and cut, but they can all be connected. So just kind of like quick snippets of things. And also for, what was it, copyrights. You can only do like little things, but some stuff that you can.
There was a fellow in Stowe that has a lot of knowledge, a lot of history here, so probably work with him.
And the archive is linked on the website, so people can access it anywhere.
Yeah, that was a beautiful thing. And when we found that out in that meeting, that everything we put on there, we can put on our school website. So that was pretty awesome. I mean, it'll be, you'll have to play in there, but it will be still something that can be done.
For like the long-term management of this project, so it lasts as long as people are hoping, which is decades. What, who's going to be in charge of the archive going forward and where do we imagine that responsibility will lie?
Angie's not allowed to leave the administration.
We're not graduating her.
It's the fine print, right?
She didn't know that beforehand, but yeah.
No, it's set up for multiple people to have access to it. Like, you know, Liz, Tom, I, Michelle, like we all can have access to it. And as people possibly roll over into different positions or whatever, you just continue to share access through that online program.
Yeah, my concern is that it just, you know, if everybody shares it, it's nobody's individual responsibility. And so that would just be one thing I'd like the administration to have is, you know, every year, what's the plan to make sure it's up to date? Cycling through stories and archival stuff that people want to see for December, for January. Just so that it doesn't end up being cast aside at some point. Because I think we are sort of making a, not a promise, but we're telling the community that while we are having some of these trophies and some of these accolades go away physically. We promised to be showing it in the TVs and so I think that's something we'll want to maintain.
I feel like I'm more optimistic for future preservation than bringing the history up to now. Because as I understand, I mean, we're archiving and uploading year hooks so that those are always preserved. And we went through administrations where understandably, when the clutter is too heavy, they pitch things, but gone with it is history and so this digital archive is a way to preserve everything. So really you're dealing with decades of history that I'm sure people in the community will have pictures and they'll, we'll have to figure out avenues even with like, man, the seventies, we have nothing. So hey, Mom and I, like send us some info and pictures and that's gonna take a lot of work, but I envision that future preservation on an annual basis is gonna be much easier because you've got your records, you've got, you know, the winnings, you've got the musical, you've got the veterans' day. I mean, all these things that as they happen will become, I think, way more robotic and like that's just where they go. That's our preservation of even social media, right? You upload it on social media, it probably goes right to the archive. So I think it'll, the promise of being way more systematic in the future is there, but it's bringing it up to date and trying to get the history implemented, which will be kind of the hardest part of it. My, and along that, I guess my only concern too is with, you know, when you have the space, and you're like, oh, it's too empty, and we gotta, let's fill it. I think that's the slippery slope that we got into where we had to manage things with policies to say, it's one thing to this year, say like, oh man, let's throw this stuff in here because it looks empty, but then, right, the next year, somebody leaves, and who's managing that? And we put that in there last year, are we, who's getting these things now that we just put them in here for show, but not? So I'm more concerned with actually the physical objects, maybe more so than the archive, than saying like who's, how are we managing what goes up on the wall? Because once it's up there, if you remove it, you'll have to answer why. So I'd be way more concerned about the procedural kinda aspects of what we showcase, than having reason and justification as, if it's an annual thing, then let it be known, right? Like, we're putting it there for a year, and then after, they can take it home, or whatever it may be, but just so that people know it's not forever, because when you put it up, they kinda think it's forever, and then you take it down, and they're not happy, so.
Good.
I'd just like to see whatever we do, like, I mean, you can build the trophy case like in almost sections, but have extra sections, you can put a, some kind of banner over a section that you don't need now, but if you get more, then you can just open up another section that's there, where we don't have to pay to add on to it, is the big thing.
Yep. And then that comes back to the prioritization as well. You know, if you've got extra room, we've got all sorts of stuff that got put into storage due to the construction project and losing this big space here. If you've got extra room, you bring more stuff out of storage. As you started, you know, accruing more trophies that you want displayed out here, then you start to bring things back and forth out of storage.
Any more thoughts? Anyone? Questions?
So maybe a further presentation, maybe if you find anything further out about costs or fire code, or where the feasibility of different things, we could see where that goes. Even workshop, maybe in January, if that's a better time to check?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, thanks Alex. And thanks Liz, for all your work with the students.
Oh, thanks, I don't, they're doing it, I just am just the first. I moved them all a little.
Bailey needed a password beginning with the D, so we watched the hackers.
Alright, admin reports.
Somebody has to pay the price for being in the audience, I'm so sorry guys, it was you tonight. But Andy's gonna have something with Michelle's report, so we're gonna have to go first, so that's okay.
Well, Andy makes her way up here, I'll just have a reminder up to all the admin, you don't need to tell us everything on your, I mean, just say, I'm a lot of words.
Okay, so typically our, so our social school, they only give us reports quarterly, but I decided that I wanted to make one for this fourth meeting, since I was gonna do it anyways, and I'm really bad at coming up with things this fall. So I made a little graphics that they usually would make if it was a quarterly thing. So our Facebook followers, we went up nine hundred followers on Facebook since August.
Wow.
Which is a lot, but we only went up twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-eight on Instagram, you know, plus it was twenty-seven, and then I found out Michelle was a follower on Instagram.
Yeah, she should.
Um, but anyways.
Wasn't gonna mention, but nature to mention.
Also, speaking of Mr. Marks, he's getting all the recognition today because in October, I posted a video as I was in physics class, we did a demonstration. I took a video, sixty-five point four thousand views, which is in reference thirty-seven times the population of Mason.
That's awesome.
Which is a lot to think about. It's also like, I'm pretty sure that's also double the population of Middleton. So, in reference, which is very big. And then our second one was our elementary costume contest on the thirty-first got eighteen thousand views. So, that was, we got a lot of interactions on both of those videos, and the one with Mr. Marks, people were like, oh my gosh, he's never changed.
Andy, will you share our newsletters, your work with all of the admin?
Yes, so we also started with Alex, we started a athletics newsletter this past week that kinda gave an overview of our athletics, our, we have like athletics updates, we have our sports and club and upcoming events on there. We're also doing coach and student, student spotlight on there as well, I think that I'm helping work on. Last week's was Mr. Ruby with the chess club, and I think right now I'm doing stuff for Mr. Trumora with middle school basketball right now for our next newsletter, so.
And you've orchestrated all the branding behind the newsletters, so you've done a fantastic job.
Yep, so that's the dichotomy.
Rudolph, thanks for all your candy.
Alright, I'll just share a couple of quick things to celebrations. Our sign is up on the building.
It's so good, the lights are on.
Right, the lights. The track lighting is set to be installed November twenty-first. So it should be in the completion station soon, and all of our doors are working. It's been fantastic, it's a great place to be right now. A couple of quick things that I wanted to just highlight is that we're working on summer school right now, and we're doing, we're working with actually One Key, and we're meeting with them. Nick and I are going to One Key on Thursday to meet with their team. We've met as a team within our, within Wisconsin Heights, and we're looking at creating more community partnerships, building that program. We've got a great team together, and looking to just do more for our community and our kids, so excited about that. Also, we have a Veterans Day program tomorrow, which has really been, it brings all areas of our school community together, so we're excited for that. And, um, let's see, I wanted to, hold on. We, I'm not sure if you were gonna mention this, but we met with, Barb and I met with our village leaders the other day, so we do that quarterly, so working with them on some collaborations for the future. And then I'm also working with our community, so our educational foundation, as well as our endowment, looking at how they are, some of the things that they're doing in our school community, and then working with the Madison Community Foundation, community foundation that houses all of our dollars to find out more about how we might bring more money into those organizations that we have here in Servicet. So, those are some of the highlights. So, any questions?
Yes.
It looks like you changed the position for your assistant into something new?
Absolutely, yes, so we ultimately, last spring, so Ben Weyler retired, so she, and when she was here in the district, she was HR. It was, you know, the description was HR and Assistant to the District Administrator. So with careful thought and articulation, we, our team has met and just looked at all of our administrative positions within the district, and we're still looking at those to see how we might shift that. We have not been with that position, that one prior since September. So we had that one to fill, and as we started thinking about where we had some need, we knew that we needed some extra support for our specialized student services, as well as still filling in the gaps with HR and Assistant to District Administrator. So, in order to get, we think the applicants that really make sense for that position, we changed the title to what you see, so Educational Operation Assistant, correct? I just don't say it. Sorry, Specialist, Educational Operations Specialist. So we have that posted, and hopefully we'll be interviewing in the next several weeks, and having someone join our team. Any other questions?
Alright, who wants to go first?
And then I'll bring a chair over. It's a hot seat.
I would just highlight, again, thinking about special education and the work we're doing, the biggest highlight I have this year is that we got through the first stage of our, it's called PCSA, which is the Procedure of Applied Self-Assessment. And huge highlight to our team and the work our Special Education Department is doing, that when they reviewed all of these APs, and we had to go through the training to do it, we had less than like twenty-five errors, and most of the errors are very small, and within trends that will be easy for us to correct. So we now enter into that correction stage, and then that updates and planning stage, but huge gratitude for the work of our social team, who writes very complex documents and I mean.
Any questions, Serena? Thanks Dale.
Two things real quick, you see if we're AP numbers on there? I will say, one highlights were AP courses where we actually have kids taking eleven different AP exams. We have eight, we offer eight courses, but we have students taking AP Calc BC. I don't think we had somebody do one of those, and then AP Physics, and we have three students taking the AP Spanish test. So, it's neat. Big news really with curriculum, our elementary school, elementary teachers, it looks like we're moving away from our benchmark advanced program with our ELE program. Been with them for quite a while, it's served us well. But it's time for, we're looking for a little bit different product, so that's a big decision for us. Elementary teachers are working hard on that, and appreciate their input and feedback provided, so that's going really well. Anyone have any questions for me? Thank you.
Sarah?
Alright, keeping it simple, I want to thank the board for the work with the calendar, putting in professional development days and early release days. So on the twenty-third, we had a professional development day, and the elementary school focused around morning meeting, which is a component in their day that we're really focusing on, and it's one of our objects on our scorecard as well. So we had professional development around there, what makes a good professional, or what makes a good morning meeting, tying in social emotional learning. And then we also had, teachers had the opportunity to watch colleagues through a little video as well. So, just a thank you to the board for supporting teacher learning. So that was our one success in under-educational excellence. Any questions? Alright, no regrets, thank you.
Alright, hopefully you're gonna do well. I'm gonna really kind of highlight, I've seen so many things that I can talk about. There's great things, obviously there's always gonna be something we're gonna be working on too, so I'm not gonna like say there's not. But something that I think was really valuable, and I will, I'll give a shout out to Tom on this, we really were trying to brainstorm something to do with our staff at our last PLC that we had more time to do, to be able to work with. And one of the things that we did, we broke apart the pre-ICT and the ACT to have our staff honestly try the questions, to try to understand really what our kids are seeing, and why we're pulling apart certain data and things like that. And it was really, we didn't look at their scores, though we're there, it's nothing like that. It was just more for them to understand some of it, because then we would pull out the data to help us try to like move what we're doing next forward, because we've kind of been circulating, we need to move now. It really allowed the conversations to be so much more genuine, and just really more applicable. And so it was really fun to hear that, as we did that in the high school LMC with our staff. So that was something that I was super proud of, and again, like a shout out to Tom, because brainstorming and bouncing ideas are just so much fun, because then eventually we come with a final product. So, super cool, so, yeah, sorry.
What do you mean by circulating versus moving forward?
Oh, great, quick question. So sometimes when we continue to do like PLCs, sometimes PLCs can get stuck in like what I call the washing machine effect, and we go around and around and around and around and around, and then we don't get out of the washing machine and get in the dryer. And so that is what we're, that's what we're doing, is we're getting out of the washing machine. We've rinsed, we have spun, we are ready to go, so. So rather than just the conversations being sitting there, now it's the doing. And that's what we're hoping to see, and you know, talking with the kids, they got some of their scores back, and they're like, oh, can we, what can we do here, what can we do here? This is what we just talked about, and we're using some of that again this Wednesday with some time in our PLCs as well. Whose idea were the Uno shirts? I love it. Mel Schmidt. She was, she sent out an email, and I was like, oh my goodness, that is perfect. We wore Waldo last year, and then the Uno shirts this year, so super fun. A lot of participation. Yeah, which is cool, and kids, kids honestly all of a sudden got onto it too, and then put some stickers on them in the morning and afternoon, so, oh, super awesome. Thanks.
Thanks Liz.
Alright, any other questions? Okay, great, alright, thank you. Good to have you here, Tom, too. Alright, Nick? Alex, who's next?
Alex, Nick, pressure. First time in the house.
Okay, okay. So, just gonna touch on a few quick things, so some of the items we kinda touched on in November, we're kind of closing out the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, and beginning the budget cycle for twenty-five, twenty-six. Some of the items that we're still wrapping up right now is the preliminary phase of the audit. We're working with the auditor and just finishing up a few things here this week, hopefully get that completely wrapped up. Couple other pieces that we're looking at is just DPI requirements, making sure we're lining up with that, and positioning ourselves heading into the middle of the year. We just recently verified the October, well, recently like six weeks ago, I guess, the October first membership enrollment counts, which helped with our utilization aid, and then the A calculations, so that was an important piece. Our focus is kinda shifting towards moderating the budget, and making sure we're kind of staying within the board approved budgets and where we wanna be as far as that goes. And then going forward, what we're focusing on is kind of our first quarter reimbursement claims, and keeping that in mind. And then December, we're finalizing some of those reimbursement submissions. January, completing the second Friday counts. And then, as we kinda look forward to next year, still the school year around like February, just working on updating the twenty-five, twenty-six budget projections, and making sure where we wanna be, and kind of revising what we need to, and working with you guys to make sure we're staying on track, so.
Any questions? Oh, I heard a brush.
Yeah, they just sent an email. On page two of the beautiful budget reports that you all give, could you answer either now or later, the monthly revenues as a percent of the revised budget? Why twenty-three, twenty-four was so different than twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yeah, I can definitely take a look, I'm not sure.
Sure, but that's.
I definitely want to do it, so. Do you wanna answer right now?
Well, I don't know, I kinda wanna get an email from Nick later, you know, the whole board, denunciation.
So, in twenty-three, twenty-four, when we set our tax levy.
Oh, Nick wasn't here either, so like, Nick wasn't here in twenty-three, so.
So, we basically, when you set your levy, you are able to book your entire tax revenue at that time because it's identifiable and receivable. So that's what we did at that time, because that was communicated that that was how it had been done. Apparently that was not the case. And in February, you'll see it kind of get back to normal, is when it kind of said, oh, that was being double booked and had to get corrected and fixed. So then, the next year, we learned from our mistake and made it how it should be aligned better to what had been done historically.
Okay.
It was a change of practice that rechanged back in February, March of that year, to realign to. It's gonna be a lot here in twenty-three, twenty-four.
So it doesn't have to do with S or dollars or something like that?
No, it's booking your entire tax revenue no matter when you levy it versus as you get it in the increments throughout the year and then one time you'll receive what you're in. Yes, it looks weird and thank you for identifying that and asking your question. That's what it's for. It kind of looks weird, ask the question.
Like to keep you guys busy with Lucy's and live shirts, you know?
Alright, any other questions? No, alright, thanks Nick. Thanks Derek. You were here, okay, great.
I know.
Hello, everybody? So our fall season wrapped up. Fall athletics went really well. Definitely room for improvement. You know, struggling with the absence of that last year's scenic class, we definitely felt it among all levels of our athletics in the high school this year. But still a lot of really good things to celebrate in the fall season. As far as some of the things that we're looking for towards this winter is that you guys have all been aware of the short turnaround on hiring some of our winter coaches for the basketball program. Those are all complete as long as we've got the two recommendations here tonight that get approved. We've got one position left open yet for this winter. We are currently looking for a second middle school girls basketball coach. Sammy Valowig resigned her position after last year. So we're working, or we're looking for somebody to come in and work with Coach Johnson for this, this winter season. Got a little bit of time because the middle school girls start their season after winter break in the beginning of January, but we would still like to get that hired as quickly as possible. So we're trying to get the word out there that we're still looking for that position. We, hopefully for the next board meeting, we'll have the Assistant Play Director position for you. We just did interviews for that. We have a candidate that we think is gonna do really, really well. So that'll be ready for next board meeting. Beyond the bell, you know, I've got your breakdown as far as your fall athletic seasons, how they did overall as well as in conference. Just got the reports for the all-conference teams, so I'll have that in next month's report as far as who won what awards. As well as next month, I'll have the breakdown as far as honor roll and high honor roll for each of our programs, because I think that's important information for the board to see as well as kind of just great justification for why we need co-curriculars. Because most of your participants that participate in co-curriculars are high and actively achieving in the classroom as well as outside of the classroom. I know communication has been something that I've been currently struggling with, so we started that new newsletter for athletics and activities and it was definitely a huge help, so it was Gwen getting that up this current week. We'll make that a regular thing and getting that out. And just trying to figure out where the cracks are and what still needs to be caught up and where we're doing really well and stuff, so. I apologize for any lapses in communication or anything that's been a little short notice. We'll work toward on getting that approved here as we keep going along this year.
So I know that, you know, evaluations for coaches has been a pain point over the last few years, so obviously now that we have had the fall scores have come to a conclusion, evaluations have gone out, because obviously I have filled one of those out as a parent. So now what is your, what is your process now that those evaluations haven't been done? So now what is your next step then with that process?
Absolutely. So we're collecting those responses. In the meantime, our head coaches are filling out the evaluation packet that you guys looked at earlier this year. They self-score themselves in all those different criteria areas. And then they have meetings with their assistant coaches where they assess their assistant coaches. And then that tool is there to really spark on conversation back and forth between the assistant coaches and the head coaches about, hey, what went well, what didn't this year? You know, what are we looking forward to towards this off-season? What's going on, you know, for next year? What are, what's our plans, you know? Off-season workouts, all that kind of stuff. That tool is there to help spar on those conversations as well. After they have their meetings with their assistant coaches, they both sign off on the assistant coach's evaluation, then they schedule an evaluation meeting with me. And I go through their self-reporting scores as far as how they evaluated themselves. We talk about why they scored themselves in different areas, we talk about things that I've seen and observed over the course of the season. There's a summary page where they write out a written description about what went well and what needs to improve on. We talk about how did those meetings go with the assistant coaches? Why they evaluate them that, the way that they did? How did those conversations go? And then we talk about the survey results that came from the parents and the students. Past practice was, here's your survey results, read through them, we're gonna go through this together. We're changing it. I don't think that was a valuable practice. And so I look at the overall report for each of the programs and I'm looking for trends. Because oftentimes, the person that was delighted with how the season went, sometimes doesn't fill out the report. Sometimes the person that has an axe to grind or is really, really upset about something, really passionate about something, really makes sure that they put emphasis on their survey result. All we're looking for is trends, repeated behaviors, repeated things that were brought up in all of those different content areas as well as in the comments. What are some of those trends? And we talk about that. And then we're gonna keep those survey results and we're gonna look at the trends over the years. So going from this year, first year we rolled it out, okay? Next year, where did we improve? Where did we see drops? How come? Did we put more emphasis in this? Is that why we saw a change in the score? Did something fall through the cracks and all of a sudden, you know, we've got a red flag or something that we need to address? So we keep that information moving forward year after year, so those coaches are continuing working on improvement.
So with, and forgive me if I misunderstood, if I misunderstood like the whole evaluation, like with, when the coaches get their packets, so do the assistant coaches, do they do an evaluation on their head coaches?
They do not, not currently.
Okay. Do you think that that is something that should be done?
It could be.
As an assistant coach?
It could be. When, when they have that meeting with the assistant coach, I hope that there's feedback going back and forth. And this year, the first year we're rolling it out, as I have my meeting with my head coach, that's a point of emphasis of something I'm bringing up is, did you guys go back and forth and talk about the season?
Do you, because that's one of my concerns that I have is that, you know, maybe they don't feel comfortable, you know, stating that with, you know, maybe they don't feel comfortable, you know, with their head coach in the room, you know, being like, you know, you know, I'm not comfortable saying, you know, this is something that you did, you know, that you did wrong or that you could have worked on because they don't feel like they can actually, you know, because they're not the head coach, so to speak. Because we have seen that in the past. And that's actually something I worry about, is that if the assistant coaches aren't able to do evaluations on their head coach, just like the players are, you know, if they're able to do evaluations, the assistant coaches should be able to do evaluations.
Yep.
You know, just like the head coaches are able to evaluate their assistant coaches. There should be, so to speak, an evaluation on everybody, right? Like everybody should be evaluating everybody. You know, everybody should always be able to have this open line of communication, right, throughout the season. You know, players should be able to go to their coaches. Parents, you know, should be able to go to their coaches if the, you know, they're, the whole line of communication, right? Like there's always this open channel. That's something I always kind of worry about is, you know, there's always been this stigma that, you know, with these, you know, the, the assistant coaches, you know, if they don't feel like they're being heard throughout the season, you know, they may not have that outlet. And so you kind of have this compounding effect.
Maybe you could refer, like currently, if that's not practice?
Right.
Then what would you suggest to the assistant, or what would be the procedure currently if you're an assistant coach and you're not happy with something within the programs? What, what do you see fit as being a call?
I am an email, phone call, you know, of face-to-face meeting away, right? I would hope that our assistant coaches would feel comfortable with a comment, question, concern and bring it up to me when it happens. You know, about something that's going on, rather than waiting until the season's already done. Right? Let's, let's address it when it happens and let's, let's sit down and let's talk about it, right? If there's a concern that an assistant coach has with the performance or something that a head coach is doing, I would hope that they would bring it up to me immediately. And if they don't feel comfortable to that right now, that's a big part of the relationship building that we're doing this year with some of those relationships that have been strained over the last couple of years.
And I think that's something that needs to be very clear to a lot of these assistant coaches, especially ones that have been around through the past couple ADs. Because I don't think that that has been, that has been clear to them, because I don't think that open door has been an open door. It's been a shut door.
Yeah.
And like I said, that's kind of what I worry about with this whole evaluation, is that, you know, from the, number one, from the, from the athlete's perspective, because number one, that's what I worry about the most. But then I also worry about, you know, from the coach's perspective, because if you don't have successful coaches and you don't have successful assistant coaches who are helping the head coaches, then if you can't start from the top and have a successful start, then you just, it's gonna crumble all the way down. So, you know, to really kind of get a hold on the whole evaluation process, you know, that's where it's kind of, and what you're doing already is light years ahead of where we were before. So don't get me wrong, don't think I'm like, I'm like picking everything apart, I'm just kind of trying to understand, you know, kind of like where we're all at from like, you know, what, where is this going from like kind of where we're starting and kind of where the, like the coaches fit into the whole evaluation process? Because I actually wanted to do something versus to go in somebody's drawer and sit there. You know, and then it kind of wastes everybody's time, right? Like they fill these surveys out and then it doesn't do anything. So I mean, like I said, what you're doing is amazing. I'm just trying to make sure that I understand kind of what the whole process is. So hopefully, you know, by you being here and being really forthcoming with all the coaches and I think, you know, everybody that I've talked to and from the coach's perspective, like everybody is, you know, really comfortable with you and, you know, they think it's, you know, it's way better than we've had the last couple of years. So I hope that, you know, everybody has that comfortable situation. So, you know, I think it's just, you know, the communication is, is the best part that, you know, I think just kind of making sure that, you know, they, like I said, especially from the assistant coach, coaching perspective, is making sure that they know that, you know, your doors are always open. Because, you know, they need to have, they need to have the backing too, because, you know, they're there, they're there to help the kids too. They're there to help the program too. They're not just there to sit on the sidelines, so.
Alex, open door hammer, Smith.
Absolutely. See? We're gonna have to get your, you know.
You have a question? Well, lots of questions.
Well, he's got one, so I feel a little bit better having them. This is more to do with the fact that in my, every year in my term, there's been a new AD. This has nothing to do with your process and I think we do have a process, Angie's right, this is leads ahead. I get concerned when I hear someone say, I want it to be about the relationship I have with the coaches versus a process that's written down and guaranteed for people. I, I think that, and it's again, not any expectation, I think that coaches have had that told to them for the last seven years in a row, that, I, I do think if we're having a process, that it is open to everybody and it's written down and people have a guaranteed form or something that isn't based only on the relationship with the AD, just because I think people have heard it so often.
Well, and in protection of yourself, I think there's the bias that if you don't have a good relationship, then it's easy to take the blame or change the narrative of well, you just don't like me, so that's why all this is happening in our cover, but the formality of our process and procedures comes with a stigma.
Mine's gonna be really quick. You said that the Assistant Play Director is gonna be on for the next, but I see it's on our schedule here.
Oh, it is today. So I didn't know if it was.
I wasn't sure. Yeah, I was real close on the deadline.
I just didn't know if it was a mistake being, if something wasn't set up right.
I did, you did the interview on Wednesday and so I typed it up and submitted it Wednesday, but I wasn't sure if it was.
I locked it out in here.
You guys are all reading, that's good.
Beth told me she wasn't sure if she could get it on this agenda or not.
Just rubber stamping, reading those. I just had a more of a, I guess, a question. It was really uplifting to me last year when some outside schools commented on our kids' sportsmanship. And I didn't know if you had any anecdotes or like similar stuff from this fall that you'd heard back about our sportsmanship? Because we've really focused on culture a lot the last couple of years and I think that's just, that's the kind of citizen that I want to put out there, is not just a good athlete, but a good sportsman.
All fall season long, from our officials, all fall season long, they couldn't talk enough about our coaches and our kids and how respectful everyone was. You know, like we didn't have any like technical fouls or, you know, penalties on like, you know, like coaching staff early, like, you know, all of our feedback from our officials and on our kids and our coaches was all super, super positive. Yeah, game after game, week after week, really positive stuff.
Yeah.
Anything else? Alright. Thanks Alex. Alright. Check, 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 check. Check, check. Onto the drumroll of the night. DPI report card report.
One of your slides, so you're gonna wanna position yourself. Well, start, tomorrow is the official day of DPI. Report cards will be released publicly tomorrow. So we've done this in the past, the night before, so what are we, four hours ahead of schedule, but just want to put that out there, so we should see data in the papers tomorrow and see where we're at in the county, that sort of thing. But here's our numbers. Want to start? There were some changes, my next slide just does talk a little bit about that. One of the things, I'll just warn you, the scale changed, so you can't really compare what we scored last year to this year. Now those numbers changed, there are some things that we can look at in the report cards where we can compare. But some notable changes to the report card, see if my little clicker works here. Couple of things, absenteeism, measured with the target, target group outcome, which is our, our, our students that actually, the target group outcome group is the group that scored the bottom 25% on last year's scores. So they, they put a little measure in there with attendance and absenteeism, absenteeism specifically with that targeted group, which does change the formula a little bit. Another thing that's just really to highlight, we do have two years of achievement data on this year's report, report cards. Last year, I don't know if you recall, we just had one bar graph because they changed the standards. Those didn't change, so what's proficient in advance, those numbers match this year. So it's one year only, that'll just be, so this year's numbers are based on two years of data. They'll go back to three years of data in the following years. They've always had three, at least three years of data. This year it's an exception, just two years of data. You'll also see on the report card, I, I did put in the presentation, there's just one page on the district report card that just talks about our free grade and third grade reading scores. So read through that, if you have any questions about those. And there were more, I actually slimmed this list down a little bit. Hard to keep track of all the changes and they, they make updates every year, as they should. Some bigger updates this year just because of the standard change. And it was time for them to make some changes. It just aligned it a little better to match with where the scores were at. And I'll go back to the front page. Really the first big change was the actual score range, the scales. In the past, significantly exceeds expectations was at 83. And so they shifted that to match with where they shifted the standards last year. And so they shifted that to match with where they shifted the standards last year. They shifted that a bit, um, and they did get public input from that. So it was a group of educators this summer that kind of came up with this scale, so that's new. So when you go through the numbers, so just pause, you can see, um, where we land once you see our numbers. But eighty-four is where we want to be. Um, let's get to the numbers. So our district details, this just kind of highlights, um, our enrollment, and then just the different subgroups in there. Here's our district report card. I know most of you've seen this for the first time. Yeah, the priority-weighted areas, um, our highs didn't change that much, so as you go through, and I think I talked about this in the past, just how the, the report card, the priority areas, how it breaks down. No pay changes for us. There, the one thing that they, they did change this year was growth. Um, really emphasized growth in schools with higher numbers of low-income students. Um, more of a priority area for, for those. I do have more slides with the district report card, and then I will take you through, um, each school, but just a couple of slides on each school. So yes, happy with that number. I think our number was eighty-one point five last year. Again, you can't compare those numbers, but, uh, yeah. It's one of those where you're really happy, but, you know, that darn eighty-four.
Yeah.
Here's our, our four areas, uh, um, all really great numbers here. Uh, you can see where we're at. I always look, you know, I look at where the state is and I look, you know, at our district numbers, and, you know, it's one of the first places that I always look, um, just to see where we're at with, um, state average. But I'll kind of just click through our slides when you see the numbers. I'll pause a little bit, see if you have any questions. Our target group outcome, um, that's pretty good number, really. Achievement, here's a number that you can, you can compare from last year. So if you look at last year's school report card, because all the districts are the same, so where did you land in the state? So this is one of the numbers that I will look at, um, as we go through our report cards under each, uh, priority area. This district score was the same or higher than ninety percent of the districts in the state. I look at that, because that's a number you can compare. If, um, we fell there, or if we're, we're holding serve where we're at, so that's a, that's an important number as you click through this. Um, yeah, um, kind of individual goal, I guess, but we talked a little bit about it. Yeah, we'd love to be in that ninetyth percentile across the board. Numbers by year, again, we have two years of data. Last year, we had one little lonely bar graph, uh, when we went through this scale. Our numbers are hold steady, down a little bit, math, district-wide. Growth goals, again, highlight that number. Target group outcomes, district-wide, again, in the ninetieth percentile. So again, that group, that was, uh, our, our lowest, our kids are the bottom quarter of our scores last year. That's, that's who they're measuring in this, this particular. On track for graduation. This is where our, um, probably got clipped here a little bit. Still, you can see the bar graph, upper quartile, but that number jumped out at me. Um, attendance maybe played an impact there for us. Um, we'll dive a little deeper to see where that's at. Here's the breakdown. This is the on-track to graduation. What does that mean and what are they measuring there? Um, absenteeism is one of them, um, eighth-grade math. Don't know how to, not to point out areas, but, uh, things that jumped out to us as we looked at these. Um, and really, these are, you know, that on-track graduation. The state looks at just certain milestones within a school district. What's a, what's a number that can represent whether or not a student is on track to graduation? That's why they use the third-grade English and the eighth-grade math. Obviously, graduation rate, and then attendance. That's what it looks like on the district report card. They just have a little spot. Third-grade reading, this is Act Twenty, so this is a new state statute. This is new on this, on the report card, um, and, you know, we're well above the state average, but I thought it'd be fun to put that on here, um, but that, that is a new little section that they have. Doesn't necessarily impact our number, so to speak, on a report card. It's for information only. That really will represent over the years, and, and one of the things we talked about, I mentioned earlier in my board report, just our, our teachers moving, moving to a different program. Part of that is our, the new science of reading and our new focus area, K-two. Uh, ultimately, what we do at the four K through second grade really impacts this third-grade reading number, which ends up being a pretty important number for us district-wide as we move forward, but what we're currently using, um, we know there's better products out there. So that's all part of it. It's all connected. Elementary schools, just a breakdown, just under four hundred students. Could you hear? For them, um, and just the numbers overall at an elementary school did move forward, um, this past year. So, yeah, congratulations, uh, for our elementary staff. Yeah, that's, that's just an outstanding number, um, for our elementary school. Here's where their numbers are. I'll just pause there. And again, we're then compared to look at each category, see where we're at, state level. Um, same measurements, we're at the elementary level, bottom quarter percent. So, but that's what our elementary students, so students in grades three, uh, three, four, five, bottom quarter. That's, uh, same numbers, which is at a different level. Go ahead.
What do you think is going on between achievement and growth there? Um, the difference from the mean seems to be a little flip-flop. So, we're way ahead in achievement for ELA, and then for ELA for growth, we're about at the mean for the state.
Yeah, could be a number of factors. Um, one of the things we've looked at, you know, some, sometimes it's our highest achieving students aren't showing the growth. We've been clipped on that in the past, where, you know, as fourth graders, they knock it out of the park, and then maybe, you know, just fall in the next category. Numbers are pretty even when we look at the individual data, but if they fall down just a little bit, yeah, it, it can hit you. That's where you get hit. Attendance is a part of that as well, more than it used to be, but, but, um, for us, we're seeing that growth. Part of it is, you know, um, our achievement is, is pretty high too. But yeah, that, we always talk about that, and a lot of our goals that we have, it's all about seeing that individual growth and just try to pick every student, move the dial and each get off. Um, that's where that's gonna help that number. That's part of the reason all, all our years of doing the SIP, you know, we've talked about that a lot. We want to see the growth across the board.
The math is crazy, eighty-nine point one. Wow.
When you look at our math, we actually dipped a little bit. Hold steady there. Here's our middle school. This is excited up there already. Great number for middle school. We saw a great, um, good chunk here as well. Um, really happy with this number. Across the board, everything's up a little bit.
So that's the target of the academic lab.
ELA really jumped for us the past year. Um, all indicators here this fall, numbers, those numbers still look really good.
Our math.
Math, we've had, so we've had a number of conversations about our math, um, and, uh, what we're doing at the middle level, because we, we, we have a couple of years of data now where we see the dips there. And so we're having some conversations where they, um, get off cycle there a little bit, do a little heady review of just our middle school math. High school, some data there. Another great number for our high school. Yeah, our growth at high school, our kids, you know, what we're doing there, we've been really consistent there the last three or four years, just that, that growth. Our kids put it all together, you know, when they get in that high school, and you can see there, everything starts to click, and, uh, getting that growth. Once again, I think it's the third year in a row, can you see that little number?
Yeah.
Hundred percent growth in math.
Yeah.
You know, which, the season folks always are like, oh my God, I've never seen anyone do that. Shouldn't, you shouldn't talk about it, but same time, it, it's worth coming up, it really is.
And the kids also understand, I think, some of the value of what, what is being done, like the, I, we really appreciate, I know our students have said it, I know they don't love to sit through that ACT two times in a year, but I will tell you, it means the world to our kids when they see what it can do, because they learn what's going on in the fall, and then they have that huge step in the spring. And like, the average of our kids from that spring was huge, um, so, super cool.
Yeah, I'd love to see that target group number. Fantastic. It's a bump in ELA, math hold steady. So, highlights, just again, our overall rating, eighty-two point five. We should be really proud, just district-wide, all the work that we're doing, uh, what we have in place. We're obviously doing some things, uh, the right way. I think our, our students understand that as well, just trying to put our kids in the best position, so when they leave us, they have options. Again, I just highlight some academic achievement, academic growth, uh, district-wide. Great games at our elementary, middle schools, and high school just continues, uh, significantly exceed our expectations. I'll finish, which is a little backyard. Anybody have any questions for me?
Are you able to look at, or are you going to look at that difference between, we were at ninety point three percentile, um, this year, are you gonna look back to last year?
I have.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, uh, for the most part, we held steady. There were a couple of categories, and, uh, you know, it's, we've just held steady across the board. Few areas where we dipped a little bit, um, but other areas where it's like, wow, look at that, where we made some great gains. So every year, you gotta look at it individually, um, see if there was something different. And then, um, you know, I'll use, I think Alex talked about trends, and you just, you don't want to make any, make decisions on one year of data, so you just, you gotta look at those trends, see where we're at, and if we have multiple pieces of data that are indicating like, hey, this is an area, maybe we gotta make some adjustments, that's where we make some decisions. But, you know, we just try to keep it in front of us, talk about it a lot, make sure that we keep our eyes on the prize, because we want to see that achievement where, where we have it.
I think it's sort of impressive, and I know it's your full-time job, so kudos, but it seems like you predicted, you know, some of these outcomes already, with the academic lab being the focus, and then you're already talking about changing the ELA for elementary schools. Just kudos to you all for knowing the data before it even comes out.
There should be no surprises. I mean, really, if, if we're surprised, and, I mean, there really should not be any surprises. We should know, and we should have a pretty good idea of where we're at. You know, you, you don't, you don't know for sure until you get the numbers, but, you know, when we get the numbers, you know, obviously, yeah, there, there shouldn't be any surprises.
And our staff enjoyed talking about it, so, and figuring it out. Like, they altered things to make our kids have opportunities to show some of this growth as well, which I value as a principal, to have staff that are willing to do that, so.
Just highlight, just one more, one more thing I would point out. You know, I'm always careful, and I talk about it every year. Every school, you know, the priority areas, the, the report card is based on different things for each school, based on the number of, uh, low-income students that they have. It just, you know, so those numbers do change a little bit, so it's always, you know, you look at the numbers, but, um, yeah, we compare ourselves, we compare the numbers to ourselves as much as we can. Any more questions?
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
I just, I think it's important to say, I think a lot of people are so ignorant behind what goes in to any of this, and just the thought process, the adoption of new curriculum, the strategies, the team needed, I mean, there's so much that goes into it, and there's so much time and work and effort by so many people, um, that, you know, this was a fifteen-minute presentation, and so, but just like the hard work that, that goes in behind the scenes. So, just complimentary of you all, and, um, kudos to everybody.
It'd be really interesting to see if, like, something like that could go into that, like, display, like, the interactive display, how everything works together.
Yeah.
Endless options. All right, so, I believe we are on District Business, donations. Um, first off, we are acknowledging a donation of two hundred dollars from Scott Kramer for the Vanguard Racing Team. Thank you, Scott. And six point two, do I have a motion to approve an anonymous donation of a thousand dollars for negative food balances?
Salute, second.
Thank you for that donation. Isaiah, Mary Beth, Mike, Matt, Dylan, Angie, yes. I vote yes as well. Moving on to personnel, do I have a motion to combine seven point one through seven point four?
Salute, second.
Excited to get these positions still. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And then again, taking a look at future meetings, um, we do have that five P M. policy committee, um, meeting next, board meeting, go through spoken language, and then again, um, in December, five P M. budget finance committee. Any questions on the event, otherwise I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Salute, second.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thanks so much, everyone.